All right, let's call this meeting order of April twenty second at six P M. Please join for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take the roll.
Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Richardson. Councilmember Crossman.
Here.
Councilmember Kingizer.
Here.
Councilmember Hess.
Here.
Councilmember Kaminsky.
Here.
Mayor DePinto.
Here. Can we get an agenda approval?
Move to approve.
Second, Councilmember Kingizer, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to special presentations, there's none scheduled. Moving on to a public comment. If you do wish to testify, please write a on one of these blue cards and hand it up here. We will get through as many as we can. Before we start though, I think I know why a lot of you are here and I would like to make a statement before we do start. As the mayor of Yelm, I want to offer my heartfelt apology regarding the recent removal and storage of the memorial at Yelm City Park. This was done without direct notification to veteran organizations on the timeline and process. This oversight was not in keeping with the respect and consideration that our veterans and our military community deserve. Originally, this memorial was constructed in two thousand and six. Much of it was damaged during a twenty seventeen accident where an impaired driver ran into it. It was our place at the time, where over the last few years, city officials, myself included, had been discussing a new veterans memorial that we would like to build to honor all who served. In two thousand and twenty-three, city council approved the purchase of the property next to Mill Pond where we would build the new memorial. We're hoping to build in phases with the first phases for the first phase opening up next year. We were not anticipating the removal of the bricks until a later date, but with construction of the handicap swing right next to it, decision was made to to remove and store the bricks at the same time. Again, I wanted to extend my deepest, my deepest apologies for the the way we handled this, especially to all those veterans here today, tonight. After speaking with many local veterans, I understand the profound significance this action had, and I regret any distress or pain this situation may have caused. We're going to try to make things right. First, we'll be meeting immediately with the leaders of the local VFW and the American Legion to ensure their voices and concerns are heard. I've already heard from many who are wanting a decommissioned memorial process to occur, and we are going to do that. Secondly, the original memorial was planned to be carefully relocated to the new site on Mill Road, but as I mentioned, those plans were accelerated due to the construction of the city park. All the bricks were saved minus three, which were damaged in removal. There were about seven others that were damaged prior to that due to the accident in two thousand and seventeen. By ensuring this is plan is accepted by the local veterans groups, we will be reinstalling the bricks along with the monument, and they will stay there until the new Veterans Memorial is ready and ready for the ready for a proper decommission as well as installation of of those bricks. These bricks will be cleaned, restored, and any bricks that were broken will be replaced. We'll be hoping for a quick turnaround and have everything in place for Memorial Day. From the conversations and meetings that I have with veterans, I might not understand what you've gone through, but I can understand how it's making you feel now. Again, I'm sorry for lack of communication and the sudden removal of the memorial. We will do everything we can to make things right. And I look forward to hearing your testimony and from your experiences. That said, let's start with John Thompson.
First of all, good evening. Mayor DePinto and members of the council, I think most of you know me, since I was on the planning commission, I guess, for twenty-five years. And I was going to read a very emotional item here, but the mayor has answered a lot of my questions, so I don't think I'm going to go over that. You do like, you do need to understand a little bit the impact that that memorial is to a combat veteran. And part of this, when we did this, we all put bricks there, and I think a lot of you probably have a brick there. And my wife Linda passed away in two thousand and eighteen, we had two bricks there, and I used to sit after she passed away on the bench there with her brick. And what happened is when I got the word that they were tearing it down, I happened to get over just in time to see half of her brick laying there. And that's a trauma to me, but not near the trauma that it would be for the veterans who were killed in action here, whose families bricks are there. And a concern I had that I bring up to you, the council, is hopefully you have notified every family that their brick has been removed and you're going to put it back. Because if they show up, what happens is, which you may not understand, some of us, when we pass away, get buried in Arlington Cemetery. It's a very long way to Arlington Cemetery, so a family member whose son, and I'd give an example of Justin Norton, for example, who right now we had an article, his brick is there. That family may be bringing a whole family in on Memorial Day to come to this brick because they can't go to Arlington. And if they found that brick missing, it would be just like walking out to your mother's grave and finding the tombstone had been stolen. So I just want to bring that to you, the significance of why we are so concerned, why we wanted it at least temporarily placed back where it was, and the paper I handed out, which you can read, there's a detail on how you decommission a monument. And a lot of the misunderstanding is somebody said, well, is this a regulation or anything? It's more common sense than anything, but it is listed there and I put it in there. The other thing that I would ask the council is, obviously, we're building a new veterans summit of memorials in the park. Is there a committee that is working on this? I would be happy to be on that committee, and I'm sure we'd want a representative also from the American Legion, because we see ideas that you've put out, we're going to do it this way and this way, but has anybody talked to the combat veterans to say, how do we want this to look or anything else? I'm not sure how this process goes, if it's a two or three million dollar process, whether it goes to the planning commission, whether there's a public hearing or something like that. If that's the case, we certainly would want to put input in on that. But again, I thank you for giving us time to speak.
Yes, sir. Stephen Slater.
I didn't prepare a lengthy one, so I'll go ahead and read mine. Thank you for letting me speak, council members, the mayor. Some of you may not know, I am Stephen Slater, I am the commander of the Nisqually Valley Post five-five-eight-zero of the Veterans of Foreign Wars. I am a twenty-year retired U.S. Air Force veteran. I'm also a lifelong resident of Washington State and now reside in Yelm area out at Lawrence Lake for the past twenty-five years. I am disturbed by the action of the city to remove only the memorial, the only memorial to our veterans living and falling in this city. I am part of the team that raised money for building the memorial and have enjoyed being able to reflect on those I have served with and those that have given the ultimate sacrifice. I was in shock when I started getting calls that the memorial was being removed. The members of the city that I had talked with always associated the movement with of the memorial to go with the building of a new memorial. No official start date was ever mentioned, as no funding was available. Planners hope for a grant from the Washington State. Given the decades of delays in improving the roads around Yelm, I believe a grant is far removed. I never dreamed the city would take such action without a clear timeline and funding to make things happen. As veterans, we are accustomed to getting orders and making it happen. You would never expect a soldier to blow up a bridge without the orders of officers above them having given such orders after careful planning and operations and logistics. It is actions that matter. The action of removing the memorial without ceremony, due regard for the members and families it represents, or the lack of notice to the public is saddening. I call on the city council to take immediate action to replace the memorial until such time as it can be properly relocated with the proper honors and respect that the lives of those who sacrificed deserves. Thank you.
Teresa Williams.
Mayor, may I?
Please.
Pass those around, please. That's an article that was done in two thousand and six by myself, my husband, somebody. Right there, that's his wheelchair. And we were very, very involved in this. This is a hat my father wore at Pearl Harbor. He had a brick. Sorry, but that's how I feel. And I had to tell my daughter and my grandparents and my grandparents. I'm the one who went by and found it. I contacted John Thompson. And can I go real cold on you? Yes, I can. The other thing I did was see to it. The Native American tribe, our Nisqually people, were involved in this. They were extremely, extremely cooperative. They were part of the honor guard. They did the firing, and this is a showcasing from one of those weapons that one of the women, I think the only woman on their honor guard at that time, brought to me unbeknownst that she was going to and said, tell your grandchildren the story. That's where some of my emotions come from. From the standpoint of John and I worked to collect money, we got out front of a whole lot of people and asked for things, and they were terrific, and they cooperated, and they didn't know us from Sicum, because I grew up in Spokane. John grew up in Illinois. We both found out here, we've been married forty years. So this was a real, real project for me. John has massive PTSD, he has massive physical issues from Vietnam and Korea. My dad had PTSD, only they didn't call it that then. He could talk to John. So everybody that was involved in this has a story similar to mine, just a little different detail. So when I saw that gone, I'm still in shock. I got ahold of John Thompson and said, WTF, it's gone? And I did use the initials. I'm not much of a lady when I need to be, it went in writing. So I'm really pleased to hear what the mayor has to say about getting this taken care of. The only thing, other thing that I have to say is in this hat is my mother. She went through the war too. The Pensacola took two hits, went back to Mare Island and then back to the Pacific. She was in almost twenty-one battles and was close enough to see the flag raised on Iwo Jima. That's my history. That's that monument's history. Thank you.
Thank you. Harry Miller.
Well, thank you. On a different note, this is the best town in the world for the Elm Senior Center to exist, and this town is such an awesome blessing. We had a crew of football players come through and do a bunch of landscaping and clean up for us, and it's just wonderful. Other good things are coming along. The support of this city is awesome, and we appreciate it. Mayor DePinto, you're always talking with Jeannie and encouraging her, and we just thank you. Our seniors feel good here, and you take good care of us, and Stephanie feeds us regularly, and she and Wayne and that fine son of hers. But just want to say thank you, I don't get to say it often enough, and it's great to be in Yelm, and it's great to be a senior. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Bob Horn.
Hi, everyone. Mayor, city staff, council members, I'm Bob Horn, I'm the lead pastor at Church of Lake and Water Yelm, and I just wanted to extend an invitation and also express gratitude. Thursday, May first, which is nationally known as the National Day of Prayer, we're going to host for our third year here, pray over Yelm Day, and it's going to be located in Cochrane Park, Cochrane Memorial Park. And what you'll expect when you come from six A M. to seven P M., it's a self-guided prayer walk throughout the park. There'll be about thirty to thirty-six posters that give different prayer points, they'll be located throughout the park. And and those topics of prayer include praying over Yelm, city of Yelm, including our council and our city staff. And with that, I want to say thanks to Lynn Roy and our Parks and Recreation Department for their support to allow us to have this at beautiful Cochrane Memorial Park. We'll be praying for Thurston County, Washington State, our nation, our world. And with the company of of our veterans here, I want to add that we'll be praying for our active and reserve military as well as our veterans and POWs and MIAs. Will be listed, so want to have you put that on your calendar, and it's again, come at any point in time during the day. There'll be, this is presented by linked, the churches of Yelm, the Linked Pastors Network, so there'll be pastors from the community there staffing it throughout the day and to greet you, but it's a self-guided time to just walk at your own pace and pray, and be in the community as they're praying for our cities, county, state, nation, and world. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to testify? Is there anyone online that wishes to testify?
You have one. Hey, it's Kayla Russell, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm really excited that we are gonna change course and make the memorial temporary as soon as possible. Thank you for listening to the veterans and hearing their stories and their feelings. If, I'm wondering if we can make like a subcommittee off the parks committee to have all of them involved as they were in the first memorial that was planned and made? And if we need help cleaning up those bricks or whatever to get them done faster, to get this monument back up for them, please let me know how I can help.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Is there anyone else that wishes to testify online? All right. And thank you for your testimony, everyone that showed up today and online as well. We are going to try to make things right here and try to fix this there. So again, thank you, and we are going to be reaching out immediately, some of the leaders here to make sure that we get things done right. All right, moving on, consent agenda. We have the April first, twenty twenty-five study session meeting minutes, as well as the April eighth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Senator, my councilman Crossman, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Moving on to old business, or excuse me, moving on to a new business, we have resolution number six-five-five, purchasing policy updates. Stephanie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And so in your packet tonight, we have our purchasing policy that we have adopted prior. We did have one change, and that was in the appendix of the policy. There was an R C W update where under Public Works Projects, under work performed in-house or contracted, when there's a multiple trade involved, the use of small public works roster competitive bidding process, the upper limit was one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred. The R C Ws were updated to change that to a hundred and fifty thousand. So it's important to us that we reflect the current R C Ws in our purchasing policy. Those, those, this policy guides our staff on how they go about a purchase that's already been adopted in the budget. So this has nothing to do with any kind of budget amendment, it's just our standalone policy for how we do our purchasing. In the future, also what we've added is just a statement that if an R C W is updated, we will reflect that in our appendix of the policy going forward, so we don't have to keep coming back to council every time there's an R C W change. So are there any questions?
Councilmember Hess.
I just want to say thank you for the hard work that you do and keeping the city staff on track on the proper things, as well as keeping us on up to date on the changes, as well as where funds go and where fund and how they're utilized. I just want to say the appreciation's there, thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Crossman.
Move to approve resolution six-five-five.
Second.
Senator, my councilman Kingizer, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Stephanie. Moving on to old business, there's none scheduled. Moving on to standing council committee report, starting with the Public Safety Committee, meeting next week. Public Services Committee.
Had meeting today. We talked about we have a nuisance property that will be coming for us shortly in a couple of weeks to council. The H C P, our company answer plan, Habitat Conservation Plan, draft is into Fish and Wildlife. We are hoping to have that update, the H C P completed by end of the year, and then we'll have to purchase conservation land in accordance with that, so as mandated by the state. And Lynn went over the upcoming events and just remind everybody, you can always call on the city Yelm website, check out the calendar, see what's going on in the city. And then Arbor Day is the next thing coming up, this Friday, six P M. Anybody that wants to come celebrate Arbor Day, who likes trees, this Friday at six at the city park on the stage, they have a list of things planned. We talked about the Palisades variants that several citizens have been concerned about and voiced. And so we talked about that, and now that's proceeding. There's some upgrades to the park coming, which we talked about that, we'd be some fencing going in on the park swing, which will be open on the twenty-second of May. And then we are looking for grants for the Veterans Memorial, so we get that project moving on. And that's what we went through today.
Finance Committee. General Government Committee.
And we met just last hour, and we spoke a little bit about continuing on with the policies and procedures. We're very near the end, we're really at kind of a cleanup of bringing that all together and then reviewing that. We did talk about our Thurston Economic Development Council contract. We'll be discussing that at our next study session. And we did talk about the open council position, applications, we're accepting applications just right now, and that closes on April twenty-fifth, so please, please, I urge anybody that's interested, living within the city limits, check it out, see if it's a good bit, a good fit for you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Mayor City Minister's staff reports, Todd.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council, just a couple of updates from departments. From the police department, we currently have one in the police academy, and two are waiting for an academy date. They're currently interviewing lateral candidates. Spoke with the chief this morning regarding the flock cameras. They've been extremely useful, and they were instrumental for Thurston County in their recent homicide investigation. The flock cameras were used for that as well. On the public work side, we got spring cleanup coming up May seventeenth, and that will be open to all of nine-eight-five-nine-seven.
Oh, finally.
Phase two B of the trail is currently out to bid. Splash pad testing will start next week in anticipation of the open on Memorial Weekend. We had another seasonal that'll start May one. We're accepting applications for an I T position currently, and we're looking for a seasonal for our Parks and Rec department as well, so that's what I got for updates.
All right. Any questions for Todd? For me, I just want to say these last Easter egg hunts were wonderful. Our city now does a bunch of Easter egg hunts, as well as with some community partners too, that provide a wonderful time for not just the youth, but adults and dogs as well. And everything, everyone was just a hit, tons of children, tons of adults, tons of dogs, getting eggs and treats. These last few weeks, I've been meeting a lot with legislators regarding our Yelm Loop and Yelm Roundabouts. They have not passed transportation budget just yet. Obviously, Andrew Barkus, our representative in the state, has been working very hard on this issue. I'm confident that we will be able to find a solution, and we will be able to to move forward with these projects this year. We will know by the end of this week, so on Sunday is the is called signy die, the end of session. And so that happens Sunday, we should know more before then. I'm here in Wednesday and Thursday, we should see some, tomorrow and Thursday, we should see some budgets roll out. We will see. Other than that, about all I've got, council reports. Sorry, what, Councilmember Wood?
I had no meetings. Get back to the outside meetings first of the month.
Sounds good. Councilperson Richardson.
It's an honor to sit here amongst veterans. I appreciate you, thank you for your service. I remember when I was a kid, I thought Jerry Fugge was old when I was a kid. See him over here, my old man, he's still alive, man, he's still and it's good to see Stephen and John, so and Harry, it's always a pleasure to see you, man. But no, thank you, thank you for sharing and and reminding us of the importance of honor. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Crossman.
Attendant steady on Friday, Yelm was well represented, we have five of us in that meeting. Nothing really exciting to report from that meeting, but we all talked about what's going on. And then just want to remind everybody that this weekend is Yelm Valley Spring Expo at the Middle School from ten to four, Saturday and Sunday. Lots of fun events, lot of local businesses be there, so please come out, tell your friends, tell your neighbors, and be a great event for Yelm for the weekend.
Inflatable fun run?
Inflatable fun run, you might see me on that on Sunday at one P M. You might see Harry there.
At the middle school.
At the middle school, crack, one P M. Sunday. See how fast Harry can run.
Is that everything?
That's all I got for now.
Councilmember Kingizer.
All right, thank you. And thank you all for being here. It was really great actually to hear some of your stories, and thank you for those that printed things out for review later. I like paperwork and being able to read that and just kind of feel that a little bit, so I appreciate you all being here. It's been fairly busy since we met last. I actually attended two Rotary meetings, they kind of had a spin of the city. We had Cody, I talked about that before, and then Todd was at the next Rotary meeting, and that was really neat to hear a little bit more about the well-being and the culture of our city and how it's growing and and just the staff side of things. Also, Rob Carlson, our chief of police, was there the following week. He talked about block and the city security, things like that. It was kind of neat to hear, I guess, the other side of of how everything might work. Always nice to have a Q and A in those types of meetings. Dollars for Scholars, I attended the meeting there, the kids are well on their way to scholarship applications in the review process. Dollars for Scholars will be giving out a hundred and forty thousand dollars in scholarships this year, so I'm very pleased to be a part of that entity and helping shape our future. The senior dinner was amazing, as usual, it's always a packed house over there. We had a visit from Thurston County Commissioner Rachel Grant, so that was really neat to see her kind of popping up everywhere and in my neck of the woods, so to speak. And then I went to a T M T L auction, where again, the community really came together, and they raised over a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for that cause. It was really neat to be able to be there and hear really about how that really affects the entire economy of our community, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Hess.
Intercity Transit, they're in process of, they've been, the authorization's been done to purchase variety of vehicles. One of the big things with that is thirteen new buses, well, they're replacement buses. We also have on May twenty-first, they will be doing public comments on the draft intercity transit twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-nine T I P, as well as the capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty. They had the national rodeo, unlike previous years, but they still placed very well. None of the teams made it into the top three. The mechanic, the maintenance team made it into the top ten. None of the drivers made it up there like they've done in the past. And then the, we're waiting for the union to go through their vote to find out about their pay that they've been negotiating. From what I hear, it's a lot nicer than what our negotiations have been going through, or ours have been nicer. So I'm blessed that I've heard the good things from our side compared to from theirs. They also, as I said, they've got the capital improvement plan and the T I P, you can find those on their website, and I will try to get them also up to some other sites as well. These are really nice to see. We also have the Easter was really good to see all the fun activities that were going on. It's nice to see that we're able to coordinate with all of our various park spaces and get them utilized. Looking forward to water park opening. Can't wait for that. That'll be a lot of fun to see the kids out there again. And then I just would like to say to all the V S O representatives here, as well as the veterans that were here, I understand what you guys went, what you kind of went through and you found out without the notification, and my understanding is just, it was a plan that was not actually in place to happen. It was just, it was something that actually in place to happen. It was just, it was something that, yes, we will improve on and do a lot better. And Mayor, thank you for your words about it. It did help. It meant a lot. So other than that, again, as was stated, please, if you live in the City of Yelm, we have an open position. Please apply. Applications are due Friday. That's all I have.
Thank you. Let's do it right here. Councilor Kaminski.
I attended my Nisqually River Council meeting. And they had their annual cleanup day last week. And the leader of the group announced that they collected 1,700 pounds of debris from the beautiful Nisqually River. And he says most years they fish out tires and things like that. Unbelievable. This year is mostly car parts and blankets. So that was interesting. So almost tongue-in-cheek, I put out my hand in the meeting, you know me. And I said, well, exactly what part of the river do you collect all the garbage from? Because it's a huge river. So they informed me that they put their rafts in, in McKenna, and pretty much sailed down to the Pacific Street area down there, I guess, through the Reservation Road. I said, you're telling me all this junk from the river comes from the Yelm area? And they're like, yes. And I'm like, great. But I know, I know. But they said mostly this area is where we have the greatest access to the river. So that's where all the junk is coming from. So if you go to the river, be neat and tidy. They're having their rafting trip June 21st, 22nd. If you've never rafted down in Nisqually, it's absolutely beautiful, but it sells out in a heartbeat. So get your application in if you want to do that. And then I attended the Arts Commission meeting. The call to art for the utility wraps that we're doing down the main road are due tomorrow. And also, a couple of them are working on a float for Prairie Days for the first time. That's my report.
All right, moving on. There is no executive session scheduled. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Second by Councilor Kaminski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.